Check audio, test audio, one, two, three.
Counsel Fortini checking in.
Hi, Counsel Fortini, you're coming through clear, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good morning, it's Counsel Santos checking in. I will be online for probably the first ten minutes or so of council.
Good morning, Counsel Santos, we can hear you loud and clear, thanks.
Counsel Vicente logging on.
Good morning, Counsel Vicente, we can hear you loud and clear, thanks.
Thank you.
Seeing the clock is nine thirty-one, I'm going to ask everyone who is here to sit down so we can begin our council meeting. As we begin today's meeting, we like to acknowledge that we gather here today on the Treaty Territory, the Mississauga, is the credit First Nation, and before them, the traditional territory, the Haudasni here on One Dap. We also acknowledge many First Nations, Métis, Inuit, and other global digital people that now call Brampton their home. We are honored to live, work, and enjoy this land. Please all rise for the singing of our national anthem to be followed by a moment of personal reflection.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all our command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true North strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you. Welcome to our regular council meeting September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. In the chambers, we have Counsel Madiros, Power, Keenan, and Brer. And online, I'll go to the clerk.
To you, Mayor Brown. Online, we have Counsel Santos, Counsel Vicente, Counsel Plesch, Counsel Fortini, and Deputy, oh, yes, Deputy Mayor's saying. So I have not seen Counsel Tor yet.
Okay, okay. Okay, I just heard Counsel Tor's voice as well. Okay, we're now at item two approval of the agenda. The clerk will go through the updates of the revisions to the agenda.
To you, Mayor Brown. Revised agenda was published on Monday at approximately three thirty PM. The following items were included in the revised agenda. Staff update regarding government relation matters, the presentation was published. The staff report regarding increasing fines for public nuisances related to motor vehicles, the report was published. And the minutes of the Planning and Development Committee, September ninth, twenty twenty-four, the minutes were published. And the minutes from the September eighteenth Committee and Council were also published. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any items of new business? I see Counsel Power.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. If I could have counsel indulgence to add a delegation for an upcoming event that's this weekend, they had missed the cutoff to submit to the clerk's office, but the timing is this weekend, so.
So this would be under announcements?
Yeah.
After delegations, okay?
For the twenty twenty-four arise business.
Seven point one. Okay. Okay. Any other new business? Counsel Plesch, did you want to add an item in camera today?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, my hand's up. I'd like to add an in-camera item that is, and I'll ask the senior to help me out with this, I think it's Solicitor Client Privilege Acquisition, potential acquisition, or something like that.
Through the chair, that's correct. So that would be item nineteen point eight? Okay. We have a motion moved by Counselor Power, seconded by Counselor Keenan, to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor, motion carries. This takes us to Declaration of Interest under Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. Does any member have a declaration of kinder interest under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act for any matter on today's agenda? Hearing none, the clerk will so note. Adoption of the minutes. We now have city council minutes before us today, four point one minutes, City Council, September eleventh, twenty twenty-four. Do any members have any questions or comments regarding the minutes? Hearing none, we have a motion moved by Counsel Brer, seconded by Counsel Madiros, to approve the minutes as published and circulated. All those in favor, motion carries. This takes us to our consent motion. As part of our consent motion process, I will read each agenda item that is subject to the consent motion, and any member may verbally identify the item to be held for debate during the meeting. Any item not held for debate will be considered as part of the consent motion voted on for approval. I'll start reading the relevant agenda items, and members can identify any items to be held for debate. Eight point one, Government Relations Matters. Ten point two-one, Staff Report, Increasing Fines for Public Nuisance Related to Motor Vehicles. Ten point two-two, Staff Report, Twenty Twenty-Five Council Committee Meeting Schedule. Twelve point one, Minutes, Planning and Development Committee, September ninth, twenty twenty-four, to be received. Twelve point two, Minutes, Committee of Council, September eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, to be approved. Twelve point three, Summary Recommendations, Planning and Development Committee, September twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. Fourteen point one, Correspondence from the Honorable Paul Clander, Minister of Municipal Affairs, in regards to ministrozoni orders. Fourteen point two, This request to resolution, it's a correspondence from Tamara Chipperfield, Corporate Secretary at Credit Valley Conservation, data Corporate Secretary at Credit Valley Conservation, dated September sixteenth, Green Municipal Fund for Growing Canada's Municipal Canopies, request for council resolution. I know we have members on the Credit Valley Conservation, do you want to hold that matter? Nope. Sixteen point one, referred matters list. Nineteen point one, closed session note to file, City Council, September eleventh. Nineteen point two, closed session minutes. Nineteen point three, report, new Brampton transit facility. I believe there is an update for council that was sent yesterday, so why do you hold that in case there's any questions? Nineteen point four, report one OLT appeal. Nineteen point five, report two OLT appeal. Nineteen point six, report three OLT appeal. Nineteen, okay, hold. Nineteen point seven, OLT appeal. And then at nineteen point eight, Councillor Plessey's matter is already held, so in camera we will have nineteen point three, nineteen point six, and nineteen point eight. The clerk will summarize these items to be included on the consent motion for approval.
Through Mayor Brown, the following items will be included on the consent motion. Ten point two one, ten point two two, twelve point one, twelve point two, twelve point three, fourteen point one, fourteen point two, sixteen point one, nineteen point one, nineteen point two, nineteen point four, nineteen, and nineteen point five, as well as nineteen point seven.
Okay, great. I have a motion moved by Councillor Santos, seconded by Councillor Plessey to approve the consent motion. All those in favor, motion carries. This takes us to announcements, at which we will present to the requesting organization. We got a number of proclamations today, and I know these are, we've got some important recognitions today. And the first two are Orange Shirt Day and the National Day of Truth and Reconciliation, and that is coming up very soon. For Orange Shirt Day, the City of Brampton recognizes and affirms this day to acknowledge the experiences of the children and shared recognition that every child matters. Orange Shirt Day is an Indigenous-led grassroots commemorative day that honors the children who survived residential schools, remembers those who did not. The City of Brampton acknowledges the intergenerational trauma caused by residential school systems, resulting in the lasting physical, mental, and emotional and spiritual harms up to and including the loss of life that continues to this day. The City of Brampton affirms every child matters. And Orange Shirt Day symbolizes the collective effort to end racism, violence, and bullying, and to support the safety and self-esteem of all children. The City of Brampton strives to educate Bramptonians of the ongoing legacy of the residential school system and recognizes the need to increase understanding for those survivors, intergenerational survivors, who have been and continue to be impacted on this legacy. On September thirtieth, the City of Brampton residents and staff are encouraged to wear orange and raise awareness for this very tragic legacy of residential schools and to honor the thousands of survivors and their families to keep in memory all those who did not survive as we continue to work towards reconciliation. National Truth and Reconciliation, the City of Brampton recognizes the National Day for Truth and Reconciliation as a time to acknowledge the children that lost their lives in the Canadian residential schools and to honor the survivors, their families, communities, and nations. There were one hundred and forty federally-run residential schools which operated in Canada between eighteen thirty-one and nineteen ninety-eight. Survivors of these institutions advocated for recognition and compensation, demanded accountability for the residual impacts and harm caused to children and their families that attended a residential school. In December two thousand and fifteen, the Truth and Reconciliation Commission released its final report, followed by ninety-four calls to action. The National Day for Truth and Reconciliation is a direct response to the call to action number eighty, which called for a federal statutory day of commemoration. The City of Brampton will commemorate and acknowledge this day through events and activities as a time of greater awareness about the tragedies resulting from the residential school system. The City of Brampton remembers, reflects, and reaffirms our commitment to learning from the truth and joining Indigenous communities on a path of reconciliation, responding to TRC's calls to action. The City is committed to working with local Indigenous, First Nations, Inuit, Maiti, and all Indigenous peoples, and this is declared on September thirtieth. Do we have any representatives here from our local Indigenous community? Seeing none, Vince, then we will make sure these proclamations are presented to them, and the clerk will share. The next item is one, let's find that Councillor Santos wanted to speak to, and it is something she's very passionate about, Seniors for Climate Action Day. So we'll have Councillor Santos read out this proclamation.
Thanks so much through you, Mr. Mayor. Whereas the Congress of Union Retirees of Canada, C U R C, Toronto York Peel Area Council, represent a significant and growing demographic in the City of Brampton, seniors are disproportionately affected by the adverse impacts of climate change, including extreme weather events, heat waves, poor air quality, and the associated health risks. It is crucial to raise awareness about the unique vulnerabilities of seniors to climate change and to advocate for policies and actions that mitigate these risks. The Congress of Union Retirees of Canada, Toronto York Peel Area Council, is committed to promoting the well-being of seniors and advocating for the sustainable environmental practices. October first is recognized internationally as the United Nations International Day of Older Persons, making it a fitting date to highlight the intersection of seniors' issues and climate action. We invite businesses, schools, community organizations, and residents to join in observing Seniors Climate Action Day and to take proactive steps to protect our environment and our senior population. Therefore, I, Mayor Patrick Brown, on behalf of Brampton City Council, do hereby proclaim October first, two thousand and twenty-four, as Seniors Climate Action Day in the City of Brampton.
And thank you, Councillor Santos, for your ongoing climate advocacy. I see Councillor Vicente was on the board, but maybe that was accidental?
No, it's because I'm sitting in the seat.
Oh, you're sitting in the seat, okay, sir. Next recognition is International Wrongful Conviction Day. The loss of one's freedom due to a wrongful conviction has far-reaching and devastating consequences, which not only affects innocent individual lives, but also affects the quality of life of their families and has a harmful effect on a society as a whole. Wrongful convictions question the integrity and fairness of the criminal justice system, and unless corrected undermines society's trust in the criminal justice system. Wrongful Conviction Day is a global movement dedicated to advocating for innocent individuals who have been wrongly convicted of a crime they did not commit. The implementation of the recognition of this day is a start of reaching a broader audience regarding the importance surrounding miscarriages of justice. This day assists in advocating, educating, creating awareness around miscarriages of justice in the hope for reform to minimize the effects it could have on another individual. Wrongful Conviction Day spearheaded by the International Wrongful Conviction Day Committee, and now many organizations are leading events in its honor. The committee is committed to raising awareness of and advocacy against wrongful convictions globally. I, Mayor Patrick Brown, on behalf of the Brampton City Council, do hereby proclaim October second, two thousand and twenty-four, as International Wrongful Conviction Day. Do we have any representatives from International Wrongful Conviction Day? Don't see any. So that has been declared. This next one, I know Councillor Brer would like to read on behalf of our council, and this is the City declaring Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Day on October fifteenth. And of course, Councillor Brer has been a great advocate and spokesperson.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair, Pregnancy Infant Loss Remembrance Day. Whereas on this day, we remember the babies that were gone too soon from stillbirth, miscarriage, and medical termination. The goal is to honor the babies that have been lost due to unforeseen circumstances of pregnancy, whether medical, stillbirth, and/or miscarriages. The purpose is to build awareness and to have a day of awareness, a day where we can honor and remember the babies without any barriers. On October fifteenth, the residents of Brampton will gather and hold a vigil lighting in honor of the babies that families in Brampton have lost during a pregnancy or a live birth. A flag will be raised in honor of the babies who lost their lives too soon. Therefore, I, Mayor Patrick Brown, on behalf of Brampton City Council, do hereby proclaim October fifteen, two thousand and twenty-four, as Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Day in the City of Brampton. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Brer. Our next proclamation is for Small Business Month. Small Business Month is an annual event that celebrates the important contributions of entrepreneurs that they make to the Brampton economy. The City of Brampton is a forerunner in Ontario in supporting the formation and growth of local small businesses via the Brampton Entrepreneur Center, which is part of the Economic Development Office. Almost ninety percent of the businesses in Brampton are classified as small. Behind every small business is an entrepreneur with a vision, passion, and purpose. Brampton is proud to support small business owners by providing them with the tools and resources that needed to grow their business through the Brampton Entrepreneur Center. We are excited to present a month of free programming. Today and throughout the month of October, we recognize the resilience and immense contributions of our small businesses in Brampton. We affirm our commitment to celebrating the entrepreneurs who make our commitment, our community competitive and prosperous with their ideas, passion, and determination. And we'll make sure this is presented to Beck. Is Beck here today? Okay, great. So what we're going to do, we're going to present this to you when we do the other photos, so sit tight, and we're going to proudly present this to you. And I know, speaking to the Chair and Vice Chair of Economic Development, we have some ideas about how we can, in every ward, pick small businesses to showcase throughout the month and do some visits and videos as well. So really looking forward to celebrating small businesses in October. Our next item, I believe Councillor Power wanted to speak to, and this is Green Sports Day, which is marked on October sixth. Over to Councillor Power.
Thank you through the mayor. October sixth marks Green Sports Day, an annual day of recognition for the efforts and potential of the sports sector to alleviate a conversation on climate change. The sports sector has historically been recognized as a venue for improving public health, accelerating the local economy, and facilitating social change. However, it is tremendous potential to contribute to the city's climate goals. Every year, Canada sends thousands of tons of used sports equipment and old sports clothing to a landfill. Meanwhile, Canada has a rich collection of second-hand sports stores, repair shops, gear swaps, and other community resources that allow you to extend the life of your gear or pick up new gently-used gear at affordable prices. Green Sports Day has served as an unofficial celebration within the sports sector on progress toward low emission goals, waste reduction targets, increasing equitable opportunities to play sports in a clean and safe environment and encourage continued sustainability efforts. Therefore, I, Mayor Patrick Brown, on behalf of Brampton City Council, do hereby proclaim October sixth, two thousand and twenty-four, as Green Sports Day in the City of Brampton.
Thank you. Thank you, Councillor Power. And I know the next proclamation, Councillor Keenan would like to speak to, and that is fire, oh, he's left, okay, well, I, I know he wants to speak to this because he's been a leader in the crackdown on fire traps in unsafe secondary units. But I'll read this out, and thank you, Councillor Santos, for your advocacy on this as well. The City of Brampton is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting Brampton. Fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are locations where people are at the greatest risk from fire. Roughly half of fire deaths happen in homes with either no smoke alarms or no working smoke alarms. Working smoke alarms reduce the risk of dying in reported home fires almost in half. Smoke alarms sense smoke well before you can, alerting you of the danger in the event of a fire, in which you may have as little as two minutes to escape safely. The Brampton Fire and Emergency Service is dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. Brampton residents should install smoke alarms in every sleeping room outside each separate living area and on every level of a home. Brampton residents are encouraged to make sure their smoke alarms meet the needs of all their family members, including those with sensory and physical disabilities. Smoke alarms should be tested at least once a month. Residents who have planned and practiced home fire escape plans are more prepared and will be more likely to survive a fire. The two thousand and twenty-four Fire Prevention Week theme is Smoke Alarms, Make Them Work For You. And we declare this October sixth to twelfth. There's a number of events that our fire department is hosting to really raise awareness on fire prevention, and we'll make sure that continues to be shared on social media. But we want to be a leader in fire prevention. It is horrifying to get a phone call from the fire chief of a preventable fatality, and education can help combat that. So I declare October sixth to twelfth as Fire Prevention Week in the City of Brampton, and I don't believe we have a representative, oh, do we have a representative from the fire department? Great, so when we do the photos, we'll present this to you. And our last proclamation is Islamic History Month, and I see we got a great turnout for this proclamation, and we'll be having a flag raising as well. October is recognized as Islamic History Month, a time to acknowledge, reflect, and educate our community about the rich cultures of our Muslim community. This month aims to inform and share the valuable lessons and heritage of Muslims with fellow Canadians. Brampton is home to over eighty thousand Muslims from diverse backgrounds and is served by twenty-five masjids and musalas. The City of Brampton is pleased to have our first-ever Muslim Employee Resource Group started and look forward to continuing to build, the building of many inclusivity initiatives. We acknowledge and are grateful to our many imams, leaders, and youth, and many community members, including staff who strive with us to make our Brampton two thousand and forty vision a reality. By raising awareness, celebrating our diversity, and highlighting Muslim contributions, we aim to foster inclusion. Reflected in our shared Canadian values, our hope is to build a city free from hate and promote greater tolerance and understanding among all residents. I, Mayor Patrick Brown, on behalf of Brampton City Council, do hereby proclaim October two thousand and twenty-four as Islamic History Month in the City of Brampton. And I believe, I got a note from Musin that there was a speaker to this, is that Imam Sabadir? So if you want to speak to this recognition in Brampton as Islamic History Month, you're more than welcome to do so.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for everything that you have done for the Muslim community and continue to do so. We all know that education and knowledge eradicates ignorance and fear, and that paves the pathway to greater communal cohesion. And to that end, various masjids and Islamic centers will be opening up their doors throughout October to receive the Brampton community with open arms and warm samosas. So we look forward to seeing you all there.
Thank you. I should note, Malana Omar has been a great leader in our community, fighting misinformation and really fostering an inclusive spirit in our city, and thank you for that. That completes all our proclamations. I did note, though, we do have representatives from the Small Business Month and from the Fire Prevention Week. We didn't give you a chance to speak to the proclamation, but if you wanted to, you're more than welcome to, if you so wished. If you have the dates on the fire prevention activities, maybe you could share those.
Our lieutenant has the dates, and we have some wonderful activity. And some, one of our favorite things to do is to host several open houses and to interact with our community, and if Margot could share some of those dates and locations, that would be great, and thank you for the time for us to share.
Mr. Mayor, councillors, thank you. We do have five open houses coming up through Fire Prevention Week, with our kickoff being October fifth. It's a Saturday at Station two oh seven on Vauden Street. Do you want me to run through all the other ones? Yeah, sure, okay, we've got one at two oh two, which is on Bramley Road, and that's an afternoon on Monday. We have Tuesday at Station two oh eight on Fern Forest Drive. October ninth at Station two oh four, which is on Queen Street. And two twelve on October tenth on Mississauga Road. So we've tried to capture all the wards for the community to come out, and there's going to be lots of demonstrations and activities. Tour the halls and see the trucks and ask any questions that you'd like to. But we will be reminding everybody that the theme is Smoke Alarms, Make Them Work For You. So test your smoke alarms and make a plan.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And looking over to these, does someone back want to speak to? Yeah, small business, sorry, I think Jennifer, Vivian, Daniel are raring to speak to this because they love small businesses as much as we do.
Thank you so much. We're really excited to present a very robust calendar of events during the month of October for entrepreneurs and small business owners to take part in. Our coworking space will also be open five days a week, starting October first. We're really excited to welcome back our coworking space members, five days.
Five days a week, and what are the hours of that?
Nine to four, Monday through Friday, so people will be able to access coworking as well as our great team of advisors for support with their business ideas.
Okay, wonderful, well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I can ask members of council to join me, and we'll present these photos. And since you're up here, we'll start off with Small Business Month, since you're ready to go. to go. Okay, as we move on to public delegations, I do have a request from the city solicitor that two of the items that were held require direction in camera. So I'm going to, and that was item...
Through the Chair, Items 19.5 and 19.7.
Okay, so I'm going to ask council if we have a two-thirds permission to reopen the agenda. Okay? And if we can hold those items to add them to the in-camera consent agenda, the in-camera agenda.
Thank you.
For discussion. All those in favor? Motion carries. Okay. This takes us to Item 7.1, which was the added item from Counselor Power on RISE. And it's, I believe Johnson's speaking to it.
Good morning, everybody. Mayor, I want to sincerely thank you for this opportunity. And I want to thank the rest of the council members for providing the leadership and the support for, particularly for the Black community. Come this Saturday, we will be having what we call an access opener to small businesses. And it's called the 2024 Arise Business Conference. And to underscore the importance of opening the doors and access to small businesses, the mayor has allowed the Black empowerment unit to partner and cooperate with us, to lead the way with empowerment and access, particularly to young people. It's become so important that the sacrifices that you all make here, that those you are fighting for, get all the access that is required. And that's why I will particularly mention my very close friend here, Counselor Power, for continued support in this area and with the rest of your colleagues. I want to say thank you. More importantly also, I want to appreciate some of the people that have been working day and night to ensure that small businesses in Brampton, particularly in our community, my senior brother, Mr. Garrett Manning, for always continuing to direct and ensure that all the efforts that you all make here, that the people who need to get the access have those doors opened. And for all of us, the Arise Business Conference, holding in the conservatory hall this Saturday, the theme says "Building and Sustaining Businesses That Empower the Black Community." I want to tell you that the Black community is ready and open for business. We are open for support. We are open for partnership. We are open for volunteering. More importantly also, the community is open to, for, as donors, you know, supporting the community at every level. I've sent an email inviting all the councilors to be part of this. And this creates also opportunities for all of us to meet and network with these business persons within our community and beyond, such that they can identify with you, they can have that personal connection with you, such that we continue to build a better Brampton. And I want to say, it's going to be a great event. I invite everyone to be a part of it. And together, we will continue to grow small businesses in Brampton, and from small businesses, we move to big businesses. Thank you very much, and God bless you all.
I believe Counselor Power would like to speak to this. Over to Counselor Power.
Definitely that I will be attending, Johnson. If you look at the lineup of who's going to be there, and it's funny, because a very good friend of mine, Ross Kadass, is also scheduled to be there, and he was very proud to post that all over LinkedIn. So I urge everyone to come on out and support, but also engage and enjoy the time, because there'd be a lot of information that'll be shared. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Johnson, and good luck this weekend.
Thank you very much, and hope to see all of you on that event.
Our next item is Government Relations Matters, which was held by Counselor Santos. Yes.
If I may, through Mr. Chair, so I'm actually okay with the presentations. There's no necess, and happy to receive the presentation by way of motion. I do just have a question regarding a GR matter, which I was just briefed on, so.
Please.
Yep. Okay, so for a number of meetings now, almost every meeting, I've been talking about the issues that we're facing in Brampton across the region of Peel with respect to encampments. I know in the federal budget, they announced $250 million to have, to help municipalities dealing with the encampment situation. Just wondering, and I know, I just received a briefing and just wanted to share with colleagues a general sense of what that briefing was, on how Brampton can possibly access that funding. And I'm wondering if I could, just by way of direction, next week at Committee of Council, get a more thorough briefing on what we can do as a municipality to advocate to both orders of government, provincial, and federal, to ensure that not just the region of Peel, but the city of Brampton, given the costs that we have had to pay for dealing with the encampments across the city, what are those, what's the advocacy that we need to do? So just a quick briefing on what we heard so far to access that $250 million for encampments, and then direction to bring it back as well next week.
Through the Mayor, Counselor, certainly we can take that back and bring that information forward next week.
Okay. And then just very quickly, just so my colleagues know, what have we heard so far with respect to that federal funding and being able to access it?
Yeah, so through the Mayor, we have been made aware of the fact that the government is going to release $250 million in immediate funding. It will be cost matched by provinces and territories. That'll be one of the requirements. And as we understand it, the government will be entering into agreements with territories and provinces in order to release that funding, and also identify communities that will be receiving that money.
Okay, great. So understanding that we're going to get a little bit more detail next week on this, and how we can advocate effectively to the provincial and federal government, essentially right now to access that funding, the province is currently in the way, kind of.
Through the Mayor, that's how we understand it right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Santos. Seeing other questions, we have a motion moved by Counselor Santos, seconded by Counselor Brier to approve the GR report. All those in favor? Motion carries. This takes us to our next item. Also, a motion to receive the delegation moved by Counselor Madero, seconded by Counselor Power. All those in favor? Motion carries. This takes us to 10.21 was on consent. Okay, this takes us to, this takes us to closed session. Fifteen minutes? Okay, so we'll return at 10:25 in closed session. And I would note, we'll try to... Oh, is there any public question? Are there any public questions? And I'll do the bylaws now as well. I have a motion moved by Counselor Keenan, seconded by Counselor Brier to approve bylaws 1462024 to 1512024 inclusive. All those in favor? Motion carries. Our next item in business is Item 19, closed session business. I have a motion moved by Counselor Brier, seconded by Counselor Maderos, to move into closed session to deal with the following items. And I believe it's an updated list of 19.5, 19.6, 19.7, and 19.8. All those in favor? Motion carries. And we'll try to time it accordingly, that when we finish the closed session business, we'll take a break for anyone that wants to attend the Franco-Ontario Day, flag raising downstairs, and then return into public session. Item 19.4 was approved on consent and not discussed in closed session. Item 19.5 was considered in closed session, direction was given. Item 19.6 item was considered in closed session, direction was given. Item 19.7 item was considered in closed session, direction was given. Item 19.8 item was considered in closed session, and direction was given. This takes us to a confirming bylaw. Item 20, confirming bylaw, I have a motion moved by Counselor Brier, and seconded by Counselor Keenan, to approve the confirming bylaw to confirm the proceedings and decisions from this meeting. All those in favor? Motion carries. This takes us to adjournment. I have a motion being moved by Counselor Madero, seconded by Counselor Power, to adjourn today's meeting. by Counselor Madero, seconded by Counselor Power, to adjourn today's meeting. Our next meeting will be Wednesday, October 16th, at 9:30 a.m., and of course, we'll have the Committee of Council before that. All those in favor? Motion carries. And for those here— For those that want to join the Franco-Ontario Day—